Good evening. I call the work session of October 4th, 2021 to order. Item 1.02, the roll call. Ms. Widener, please.
Mrs. Evans-Brockett?
Here.
Mr. Hollis?
Here.
Dr. Pollard?
Here.
Lofton?
Here.
Mrs. Mayers?
Here.
Mrs. Roberts?
Here.
Dr. Weston?
Here.
Ms. White?
Thank you, Ms. Widener. Item 1.03, I need a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 1.04, next week we'll have a special recognition. And that brings us to item 1.05, comments on any topic. At this time, we're going to accept comments from the audience. We did start a new sign-in procedure tonight, so I'm going to call those first that stated that they wanted to speak, and then anyone else will be free to come up. You need to state your name and municipality or the building where you're employed. You're limited to three minutes. You have opportunity now or at the closing of the board agenda. You can speak at both of them, but only once at each time. I shall maintain control of all meetings and may terminate participants' comments if they're directed personally abusive or obscene, or when the time limit has been exceeded. And the purpose of public participation is to allow the board the opportunity to hear feedback from community members. It is not designed for debate or discussion with the board. And with that, I am going to ask Mrs. Wendy Ledford from Schwenksville to come forward. Mrs. Ledford, I need you to keep your mask down while you're speaking.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Wendy Ledford, and I've been a school secretary for the district since July of 1996, currently at Schwenksville Elementary. I am sad to say that these past 18 months have been the most trying and difficult of all my years. The most recent school board decisions have made me feel disrespected, devalued, and the object of discrimination. Mandatory testing of only unvaccinated employees and voluntary testing of vaccinated employees is a farce. It has been proven that vaccinated individuals are capable of not only getting COVID-19, but also transmitting it. For the past year, I believe I was treated fairly, asked to self-monitor any symptoms, maintain distance from others, wash hands frequently, and so on. This past week, I had to submit to assurance testing after being denied a religious exemption. The reasonable accommodation offered to me by the district was to take an unpaid leave of 90 days, and then after the 90-day period, return to work and comply with the testing anyway. I hope my feeling of hopelessness and violation, as I submitted to the mandatory testing, helped all of you to feel safe and preserve the health and safety for the PV community from an illness with a 99% recovery rate for most age groups. I think a more reasonable accommodation to my request for religious exemption would be a saliva test for COVID-19. There are saliva tests that are clear approved that the MCO PH would accept. It sounds like the only missing piece is the training of contracted nurses to perform said tests. I can't imagine it's any more difficult training than the test I submitted to at Middle School West last Thursday. Have there been any staff-to-staff or staff-to-student or student-to-staff transmissions of COVID-19 in any school district buildings or on buses? Why was this approved by the board? What money are you being paid to subject your employees to go against any of their religious beliefs, an invasion of their privacy, and their exposure to known carcinogens? To discriminate against a minority group is abomination and doesn't begin to follow what you say the district stands for, cultivating an inclusive community of learners. It's time for you to stand up for the rights of everyone, not just the majority. I implore you to stop demanding insurance testing and show your care and concern for all employees. Even if I were to test positive, I am never closer than six feet to anyone in the building without a mask for more than 15 minutes. So there, I wouldn't be any need for anyone to quarantine. So what exactly is the point of testing other than to discriminate, attempt to humiliate, and segregate the unvaccinated? I'm wondering where the control of this board will end. Are you considering random drug testing? The students at Schwenksville Elementary are my children. Their safety is the utmost importance to me. I know I am the first line of defense against an intruder, a school shooter, a threat of a tornado, or even a bear me entering down the perky. If I am willing to take a bullet for my children, I don't think it's unreasonable to request a saliva test. You might think, "Oh, Wendy, it's just a test." But I ask you to think back. It was just a two-week shutdown. It was just a mask. It was just two masks. It was just a shot. It was just two shots. It was just a booster. And now, really don't know how many shots will be for the rest of your life. Please allow the employees of Perkyon Valley School District the freedom of control over their own bodies for either medical or religious exemptions, and the options to consent or not to consent with medical studies using our testing data, and stop the discrimination. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ledford. Next on my list, I have Keith and Patty Frye from Lower Frederick. Mr. Frye, I'll ask you to pull your mask up. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Keith Frye, Lower Frederick. I stand here in front of my family, friends, community to share my thoughts about the current situation regarding masks, vaccines, and testing. I don't care if you want to wear a mask. I don't care if you want to get a vaccine. I don't care if you want to get tested. But I do care about the freedom of choice to decide whether or not you want a vaccine or to wear a mask or get tested. I've been coming to these meetings for the last four months, and usually, we stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. It ends with the statement, "Liberty and justice for all." I currently do not feel that we all have the same liberties and justice for all. This past week, my wife received an email from Ryan Moran, the Executive Director of Human Resources. His email states, "All employees who are unvaccinated are required to participate in the insurance testing program." What if this email sounded a little different? Something like this. "All employees who are black are required to participate," or "gay," or "women." Shouldn't this letter just say "all employees," period? Why just the "unvaccinated"? This is discrimination and needs to be stopped. I don't believe anyone should be getting tested. If you feel sick, stay home. But if you're going to mandate a test, make sure everyone is safe. Why wouldn't you test everyone, vaccinated, unvaccinated? We all now know that the vaccinated people can also get and spread COVID. You continue to tell us that you need to follow the state and county recommendations, when in fact, you did not follow them this past week because Perkyon Valley School District was, in fact, in the high level of community transmission. And by these rules that you adopted, it specifically states "Once a week, assurance testing is required by all staff, unvaccinated and fully vaccinated." And also, let's not forget that this test is not even approved by the FDA. It says right on the package, "Warning: The Bynax COVID-19 antigen self-test has not been FDA cleared or approved. It has only been authorized by emergency use only." The good news this week for my wife was that she tested negative, which is a crapshoot these days with these unreliable tests. Seems crazy that a healthy, non-sick, non-symptomatic individual would even need to be tested. My wife's rapid test results, it says right in the letter, "Negative results do not rule out SARS-CoV-2 infection and should not be used as a sole basis for treatment or management decisions." So what's the point? These tests are silly and unconstitutional and should stop immediately. Now, let's talk about these masks. I'm 100% against these ridiculous masks, especially for the children who have a 99.999947% survival rate. More children die each year from auto accidents, drowning, suicide, than they do from COVID. I believe you are putting these kids in much greater harm by limiting the amount of clear oxygen that they can breathe in during the school day. We all know that they are not properly trained in wearing a medical device/diaper on their face. I have no young children in the school district anymore, but parents, you can apply for mask exemptions. Many schools around us are accepting them.
Mr. Frye, your time is up.
Please stand up for your children's rights. Stop masking them. Please remember to vote on November 2nd for Patriot Sailor Gettys Keenan Fountain. Thank you.
Next up, I'll invite Edward McGuire from Perkyon Township.
Good evening. I just wanted to recommend for the upcoming Operations Committee, if we could discuss today's phone outage. I wanted to see what possibly we could do about contingency planning for such an outage, and also procedures for continuance when the phones go out. Even though it was a short period of time, there's probably more control procedures that we can put in place to offer alternative ways of communication. I actually, my kids are too young to attend the school yet, but I'm actually starting to speak to some of the administration officials, and I just happened to need to call today. And just noticed that I couldn't get in, and then I went to the website, and it was the same number, so I was like, huh, and there was no notice on the website. So it's like, oh, I wonder what's going on. Then I found out later on that there was an email that said, "Oh, the phones are out," and then it gave kind of basic alternatives. But I think we can do better in terms of either better accountability from the vendor to supply alternative communication modes or a switch-over from a disaster continuity planning standpoint, or even just more kind of thorough outbound communications with alternatives to allow for inbound communications as an alternative if the phone system goes down. As opposed to the internet, right? Internet going down is pretty bad, and I know it's probably a voice-over IP system, but there should be some kind of failover system. So again, just recommending that we talk about in the upcoming Operations Committee meeting. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McGuire. I'll invite Robert Liggett from Perkyon Township up next.
Thank you. Robert Liggett, Perkyon Township. I just wanted to thank the Policy Committee and the board for actions that are about to happen later on in this meeting about the first reading of the policy changes regarding public comment. For those that haven't dove deep into the agenda tonight, the policy changes that were proposed about two months ago are essentially eliminated. The public policy and the fact that we can speak to any topic at the beginning of the meeting is going to continue. And I'd like to thank the board and, like I said, the Policy Committee for actually listening to the public, for listening to reason and argument, and actually reversing yourselves from a stand that you had previously. I think that stands, you know, well for you and speaks to the fact that things can change in this arena. And again, I'd like to thank you for that. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Liggett. At this time, I'll invite anyone else up who would like to make a comment.
My name is Erin Maximilian, and I am a teacher at South Elementary. Tonight, I am speaking on behalf of many staff members who are required to participate in weekly assurance testing. I am not speaking on behalf of PVEA or any other organization. The board passed a resolution to require all unvaccinated staff members to submit to weekly assurance testing. The Bynax now rapid test that is being used has not been FDA-approved and is, in fact, under emergency use authorization, which means it is experimental. The district is requiring unvaccinated staff members to participate in experimental medical testing, a test which will not even be authorized for use after December 31st of this year. I've also learned that religious and medical exemption requests to this experimental medical testing have been denied or answered with the option of unpaid leave as a reasonable accommodation. Some of these exemption requests are from cancer survivors who are struggling with the idea of putting a chemical-filled nasal swab that contains a known carcinogen into their body cavities. While there are other surrounding school districts that are participating in assurance testing, most of these districts are not discriminating amongst their staff. The assurance testing done in most of those districts is voluntary, regardless of vaccination status. Those staff members have freedom of choice and are not being discriminated against for their medical conditions or religious beliefs. Now on to the subject of consent. In the MOU draft with the Montgomery County Office of Public Health, it clearly states that the district is responsible for obtaining the consent of all staff members who will be participating in the assurance testing. Several staff members have indicated that they have not given consent to this experimental medical testing. Does the board's resolution override having to obtain consent from participants? When is it okay? When is it okay to force staff members to participate in experimental medical testing against their will? Yes, of course, staff members want to keep students safe. Yes, staff members want to keep the community safe. If this assurance testing is truly about the health of our community, then the district would make the reasonable accommodation of a saliva test to those who have requested it. The CDC has openly said that COVID-19 can be transmitted by anyone regardless of vaccination status. Common sense risk management would tell you that forcing 10% of the staff to be tested would not be a reasonable way to eliminate the risk of transmission. Is it feasible to test all staff on a weekly basis? Probably not. But anytime there is a risk involved, there should always be choice. Unpaid leave is not a choice. It's a punishment. Stop forcing experimental medical testing on your staff against their will. Stop discriminating against a minority group. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Maximilian. Are there any other public comments at this time?
My name is Jason Saylor, Skidback, Pennsylvania. This afternoon, Governor Wolf announced that 86.4% of Pennsylvanians age 18-plus have received at least one dose of the vaccine, which would mean in roughly thirty-some days, that would mean 86.4% of all adults in Pennsylvania have received most, both doses of the vaccine, which puts us, we would be ranked the fifth-largest vaccinated state in our country, which is great for Pennsylvanians. I myself am also vaccinated, as is my wife and my 13-year-old child. Assurance testing should be done for everybody because we now know, the data shows, not just in Pennsylvania, but the data shows all over the globe that if we want to ensure that there are zero cases of teachers having COVID in the school building, then the best approach for that would be assurance testing for all teachers, not just unvaccinated teachers. 86.4% of adults in Pennsylvania are vaccinated, but yet we still have a high watermark of COVID cases in Pennsylvania because you can still carry COVID with the vaccine. And that is a very important data point to know. That's crucially important to know. That if we want to really ensure that there is no teachers, or staff, or admin that have COVID before they enter the building, that you would randomly test or do assurance testing on all teachers, not the unvaccinated teachers. We're now at a point in our school district that our union is no longer supporting teachers for one subject. There are really bad teachers in our school district. I've heard from other teachers. I've even heard from admin that we have bad teachers, and the union protects those bad teachers through tooth and nail. But the union is no longer protecting unvaccinated teachers. They're ready to put them out on a 90-day leave, and after that 90 days of unpaid leave, they'll then be forced to make that same thought process, and then they'll be terminated. Where have we come? Bad teachers, if you're vaccinated, stay. It's great for the kids that you're bad, and we'll protect you as the union. But if you're unvaccinated and a good teacher, you have to go. This mindset has to change. We are 86.4% 18-plus vaccinated in Pennsylvania. Where should we be? 99.9% vaccinated, and then we'll add the booster shot? We're no longer allowing religious exemptions for COVID, but if you're not vaccinated for polio for a religious reason, and there are students and teachers in our school district, that's okay. And chickenpox, that's okay. And MMR, that's okay, but not the COVID vaccine. I believe people should be vaccinated. I'm vaccinated and have been for a long time. But listen to what we're doing. Look at what the union's doing. They're forcing good teachers out because they're not vaccinated for COVID. But they're going to allow teachers and kids that have pol-, that don't have a polio vaccine still be in the building. And if you're a bad teacher, we're really going to protect that teacher. That is insane. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Saylor. Are there any other comments? I need you to pull your mask up, please. Thank you.
My name is Brianna Hendricks, and I am a teacher at Swansville Elementary School. I am speaking on behalf of staff members who are mandated to get tested for COVID-19. For the past year, the district has treated staff members as adults capable of monitoring their own bodies and health. With the past board meeting, this has changed by requiring unvaccinated staff to get tested weekly. Why are some staff members still able to self-monitor, yet others are having to undergo weekly testing with tests that are intrusive and not FDA-approved? These unapproved tests are considered experimental. These unapproved tests are known to give false positives. They also only give a single moment snapshot. They don't actually give assurance of anything. Why are we testing healthy people who have no symptoms and have not been close to anyone who has tested positive for COVID? People who have received the vaccine are still able to get and spread the virus. However, they are more likely to have mild symptoms or be asymptomatic, so they have a better chance of not knowing they have it. They should be tested just as much, if not more, than the unvaccinated. By only testing those who are not vaccinated, you're discriminating against them based on the medical or religious reasons that they have for not receiving the vaccine. Our district prides itself on being an inclusive community, yet these are not inclusive actions. The district sent out an email stating that, beginning this week, assurance testing will be open to all employees, regardless of vaccination status, who wish to participate in the program. This would be great if it was voluntary, as it sounds, as it would give those who think they might have been exposed access to being tested. However, it is not voluntary for everyone, nor is it convenient for everyone. Unless the testing is in your building, you need to go before or after contract hours. The after-hours time only gives you a 30-minute window to get across the district and get tested. You then may be, will be seen in a building you don't belong in. That means anyone who sees you now knows either you are unvaccinated or think you might have been exposed. Individuals' health information should not be exposed like this, but should be kept confidential. If testing is necessary, it should be in every building and every staff member should need to take part. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hendricks. Any other public comments at this time? Seeing none, we're going to move on to Section 2, Reports and Presentations. We're going to start with Item 201, but before I ask our students, Mr. Seibel and Mr. Schaefer for their report, I understand we have a birthday being celebrated today. So happy birthday to Mr. Seibel.
Thanks.
Embarrassed you a little bit, right? And now I'll turn it over to you guys for your report.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Matt Schaefer. We're a little over a month into school now. Things are going very smoothly, all things considered. Our sports teams are absolutely crushing it with some notable wins. In football, golf had districts today. We had a couple of kids go. Field hockey's been winning big. Both our soccer teams are doing very well, and so many other sports. We have Dig Pink on Wednesday. Every game that I've been to, every game that I, that all the students go to, our school spirit is on display to the max. I mean, going to football games, soccer games, sea of orange, sea of brown, it's, it's insane how, how the students come out and support our team, so that is good. On another note, our clubs are also in full swing. Key Club is up and running. The Take Action Club is working on projects regarding the environment and how Park Valley can help the environment. Science Olympiad has begun choosing their competition topics, and Speech and Debate has begun, has begun prepping for their first competition, which is coming up this weekend.
In addition to that, GSA, Safe Collective, and Robotics are now meeting. The newspaper is producing a print paper in the coming weeks, and Game Collective is, is gaming away. We'd also like to say that we're super excited for the homecoming dance that's coming up and Spirit Week that's going to take place later this month. It's going to be different, but we look forward to Dancing Under the Stars. That'll be a good time. Finally, our fellow students are doing phenomenally on the SATs and PSATs that have been coming up and passing. And we just want to say happy fall, everybody, and have a nice evening.
Thank you very much. That brings us on to Item 202, the President's Report. Just a couple of things. October 2nd was National Custodian Day, so I wanted to take a moment to recognize the hard work that our custodial staff does. They deserve our appreciation every day, but most especially during this pandemic. And October is National Principals Month, which recognizes all the elementary and secondary school principals who dedicate their knowledge and abilities all year long. So thank you to all of the amazing Perkyomen Valley principals and vice principals. And that's all I have for tonight. So Item 2.03, the Superintendent's Report. I'll turn it over to Dr. Russell.
Thank you, Mrs. Evans-Brockett. I have just a few points of interest that I'd like to share with the Board this evening. I am trying to ground some of my reporting in the PVSD values that emerged out of our last comprehensive planning process, and they fell into those three categories that we referenced, future readiness, supportive schools, and partnerships. And these values are the things that we attempt to uphold and actually engage our students in exercises around developing. We have another comprehensive planning process that's upcoming. For this evening, I'd like to focus just a little bit on future readiness and empowering our students to pursue their strengths and their passions, and some of the ways that we do that currently in our schools. So we have, I have three points, rather, that I'd like to share with the Board this evening and the public. The first has to do with student voice, empowering our students to have voice and agency. Our marching band home competition, engaging our students in activities that recognize and realize their strengths, and then a school climate survey. So later this month, on October 14th, there's an opportunity for students at our high school to participate in a student voice, student panel, where they can look at a current policy and propose changes to the policy. That will happen here in our high school library from 8:30 to 11:00 with some high school students that feel brave enough to step up and share their thoughts around some of the policies that affect their lives and their experiences at school. We will have some state representatives here and some senators here. Board members are invited to attend this, as well as some staff that will be available to attend. And students will look at a current policy, a policy, excuse me, and explain the issues as they see them in a particular policy, and then suggest some alternatives or revisions to the policy, noting the strengths and weaknesses, and then actually how we might move proposed policy changes forward. What are the action steps that would need to be taken? And I would, I would like to call out that Representative Cerisi and I participated on a similar student panel through the Freedoms Foundation under the leadership of Dr. Halas, and we were really impressed with what students presented and their critical thinking around the policies and changes to the policies to improve circumstances and experiences. So I'm looking forward to this experience for our students, and Mr. Seibel is actually one of the brave students who will be participating, at least as of Friday. So let's hope that continues. So looking forward to it. So we have lots of activities that are ongoing right now in our school system. I want to call out marching band. So if you haven't heard our band perform, it is definitely worth your time. There is a Music in the Valley Celebration this year. It was canceled last year, as many things were. This year, it's on October 9th in our stadium, where our marching band invites other visiting marching bands, and they have a, a sort of tournament or a show, and it's really entertaining and worthwhile. This is one of many activities that's happening right now, and that was really important to the staff and administration, as well as our Board this year, that we were able to engage our students in as normal a school experience as possible. And I know that there are still some things that are not normal, that are not as typical for us. However, the engagement in the activities, whether it's marching band, whether it's other arts, whether it's athletics, whether it's after-school clubs, are really supporting our students and their social and emotional well-being. So if you're available on October 9th, I recommend that you attend. Oops. Sorry about that. All right. So a school climate survey. What I want to share with the Board is we've been talking about conducting a survey that would focus on the view of our students' climate, from the perspective of our students, our teachers, our administrators, our parents. And we want to learn about that climate and what individuals view as real strengths, as well as areas in need of improvement. And this survey will also support our comprehensive planning process that's upcoming under the leadership of Mrs. Smith. So please look for more information that's upcoming, hoping to get a survey out in October that will go to those different stakeholder groups, and then look forward to really getting a sense of where we are as a school district according to the views of these various individuals. An opportunity, again, to empower our students to have a voice and help us to know what's working well for them, what's supporting their experiences, what could be improved. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Russell. Moving on to Item 2.04, the Solicitors Report. Mr. Subers, do you have a report tonight?
I have no report.
Thank you. Item 2.05, Board and District Committee Reports. We've changed things up here a little bit. We now have Board Co-Chairs for our Board and District Committees, and I'll be calling on those Co-Chairs to give a short update about their committee meetings. Starting with Finance, which I am the Board Co-Chair. Just quickly, the Finance Committee met on September 30th. Mr. Weaver has an in-depth presentation for us tonight, so I'm not going to go, spend a lot of time here. I just want to note that the next Finance Meeting is scheduled for October 28th at 7:00 PM here in the library and via Zoom. Policy Committee, I am the Board Co-Chair on that committee, and they met on September 21st. You'll see a number of policies presented for first reading in Item 9.01. Most of these policies just required a minor revision to reference the Threat Assessment Policy and Team. That's a new mandate from the state. I did want to say that the committee did hear the concerns in reference to Policy 006 and 903 and are not recommending the changes to the public comment section of the agenda. And the next Policy Committee Meeting is October 19th, again, 7:00 PM here and on Zoom. Communications Advisory Committee, Ms. White.
Thank you, Mrs. Evans-Brockett. We met earlier this month, or I guess later last month, to discuss the communications topics that were carried over from last year. It was our first meeting of the year. Majority of our conversation focused on social media presence and the different medium that all of our buildings and also the district office communicate with the public. We talked about overall what the district's goal and mission is with regards to communicating information to the public and also engagement. And Dr. Parr is going to be following up with Mr. Subers to talk a little bit more about purposeful engagement and posting. And then the next topic that we talked about was district branding, revisiting our seal to hopefully have it represent a more current vision based on our mission statement, as well as overall branding continuity with all different public-facing medium for the district in itself. So more to come on that, and that's pretty much it. Thank you.
And next meeting is not until January? So, thank you. Education Committee, Mrs. Mears, please.
Thank you. We talked about education highlights that are currently happening in the district, and talked about the planned curriculum review for what different curricula are being reviewed. Mr. Ganesh shared that October is Cyber Security Month. And we also talked about the Comprehensive Plan Midpoint Review. And I just wanted to share really quickly questions that we discussed as a group. And I would encourage all those who are interested to go on to the Education Committee page and really dive in to see what a lot of the answers were. But some of the questions that we looked at and discussed were, what would we like to see occurring at Perkyomen Valley in three years? What are desired outcomes? And as we review survey data, academic performance data, equity data, et cetera, what are we wondering about? And what do we see as the strengths and needs of the Special Education Continuum of Services? So there's a lot of really good discussion, and I would encourage people to take a deeper dive into that. dive into that. We talked about a gifted task force that's going to be put into, put together soon, probably, I guess, more like the December timeframe. And then we also talked about the preliminary performance results. Lori Smith gave us an update and an action plan for some deficits that we're seeing, and we'll continue to look at that monthly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mears. And I'll just note that the next education meeting is October 27th. Safety and Operations, Mr. Dora, please.
Thank you. We met on 9/23. We got to meet the new Director of Operations, Joe Fabrizio, who replaced Scott Klemmer. Dr. Kloon shared updates on the Lenape Arboretum in Mullenberg Woods, as well as involving permitting. Dr. Russell discussed redoing the concession stand, as well as the paper patio. We discussed the Gilmore traffic study around the high school and this campus. A safety and security update from Mr. Miller. And then the LPLL president made a request to update fields on the Skip Act property. And the next meeting is on 10/21.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dora. And Wellness, Dr. Kohler, please.
Thank you. So the Wellness Committee met on September 22nd, and we primarily focused on what our staff is doing to support our students and families as we try to return back to a more normal school year. We talked about how our counselors are supporting families that were affected by Hurricane Ida. They are keeping in touch with these families to see what their needs are in terms of housing or maybe transportation. If you're not aware, anybody who was displaced by the hurricane can still attend PV schools, and so there is assistance for that. We also talked about, which our students mentioned, that our activities and sports are back in full swing, so that's really great to see. And one of the things that we're doing to support that is offering a late bus. So there are buses that leave in the evening. There's a schedule that has been sent out by email, so students can sign up for that, and that's to hopefully encourage them to participate if maybe they did not have transportation to do so. And then in our classrooms, we talked about how elementary schools have started to implement morning meetings to try to establish that connection between students and really start to make them feel more connected to each other as they return to full-time in-person. And middle school is also trying to implement some kind of activity like that during their advisory period, and high school will use extended homeroom time to do some of those same types of things. Lastly, we talked about whether we should revisit the school start time. We had discussed, prior to everything getting shut down in March, we were just starting to talk about whether we want to look at when we start schools and what some of the other districts are doing. So we discussed whether it's time to return to that conversation, or if there's too much other stuff going on, and I think we'll continue to reevaluate whether to visit that again or not. So, our next meeting will be November 17th.
Thank you, Dr. Kohler. And just a couple PSBA legislative updates. Although an attempt on the House floor to amend the mandatory voucher plan under House Bill 1254 failed with a vote of 94 to 105, efforts continue to pass the bill. So PSBA is encouraging everyone to continue your efforts to stop this bill in any form from receiving further action. This is the bill that will require districts to pay private school tuition for any student in the district. If a school is forced to close to in-person learning for any reason, it does not delineate if the school has to close for natural disasters, safety threats, health concerns, and it would require the district to continue paying the tuition for the remainder of the time that a student attends private school, regardless of whether all district schools were open for in-person education. PSBA is also asking for help to defeat House Bill 1685, which was reported out of the House Education Committee and is now on the House floor for consideration. This bill allows significant unchecked charter school expansion with no public oversight and no consideration given to the quality of the charter schools' educational programs. It provides no real reform and only exacerbates the flaws and overpayments to charter schools. And of note, there is a Fall Virtual Advocacy Day on October 14th that you can register for through PSBA. Are there any other board members that have any committee information they'd like to update us on? Okay. Moving on to Section 3, the Consent Agenda. Items that represent standard, routine business of the board are included in the consent agenda. Board members may request to have any items removed for discussion. The consent items as of October 4th, 2021, are listed below. Additional items may be added to the consent agenda during the work session meeting tonight. Any questions on any of those? Okay, Section 4, Education, Dr. Kohler, please.
Thank you, Mrs. Evans-Brockett. Item 4.01 is an education update. We'll be hearing from Mrs. Smith, Mr. Moran, and Dr. Boyd.
Good evening, everyone. Our education updates, as Dr. Kohler mentioned, will be tag teamed a little bit with myself and my colleagues. So we have a couple of agenda items for you this evening, starting with our field trips. A little bit about the comprehensive plan, which includes a special education plan, and then Mr. Moran will have some staffing updates, followed by Dr. Russell with Health and Safety Plan. So first of all, with our field trips, each year we do come to the board and just share with you the field trips that we are planning on. And so the next couple of slides, we'll have some pictures of what we had done pre-pandemic. We are evaluating each of them as we near the times of these particular trips to determine do they meet our Health and Safety Plan guidelines and that of the location, determining the feasibility of each of them. Of course, any trips that are international trips or overnight would come to the school board for approval, and again, we're just making sure that per policy, we are sharing with you some of the planned trips. So, elementary's on this first screen. I actually just met with the elementary principals this morning. We have gotten to a point over the past several years where we are very consistent across the buildings on what we do. So they are, again, at this point investigating which experiences we can do at this time of year or in the spring and still meet our Health and Safety Plan. But it is our intention to offer field trips to our family, to our children. Middle school does two per grade level, and we actually already had the college settlement piece in 6th grade, and that seemed to go very well for both of our buildings. And then the high school trips are much more based upon specific courses, and so this is a list of things that in the past have been typical trips. Again, we will see as we evaluate each of them what comes forth, and then provide an update to you closer to the end of the year of what trips occurred. International trips. So you did previously approve a trip to Europe in, it was supposed to be this past summer, and it was postponed until May of 2022. You can see the cities that that group will be visiting. You will see on the board agenda for this evening, we are requesting approval for an additional trip to Europe in the summer of 2023, but to a different group of cities. And again, this is aligned with our European Studies course at the high school. And then the Japanese exchange program is something that PV has been very proud to participate in and has been previously board-approved, but again, does need to be postponed due to the impacts of COVID, and we are requesting the postponement of that until 2023 due to the pandemic. And that's both pieces of it. That's when they come to visit us, as well as when our students go to visit Japan. And then the comprehensive plan, it is the time for our midpoint review. Dr. Boyd and I are co-facilitating this. Our current plan was submitted in November of 2018. Normally, you do your review three years in. It was delayed due to COVID, and it is due to PDE by March of this particular school year, school year, excuse me, with a 28-day public review. So it is not rewriting the entire plan. It is a midpoint review of that, and so you'll notice it's not quite as extensive, but we are in that adjusting and monitor part of the phase. And the state has now called it the Ready, Set, Go. So we have three phases of that. We are in ready right now, where we're looking at forming our committees, reviewing our district profile, mission, vision, and values. We will then move into the set piece of this, where we will do a needs assessment, strengths and challenges, the survey that Dr. Russell spoke about, and then the go portion is where we will set some goals and action plans and what professional development is needed. There will be four committees that we will be forming, the Steering Committee, which will oversee the entire process and review the recommendations of some of the subcommittees and consider those action steps. An induction program is required to be reviewed, as well as our professional development plan, and Dr. Boyd will be leading the special education and compliance monitoring pieces. And the last slide for me, then, is just the timeline here. Again, it is, it is pretty condensed between September and December to accomplish all of the committee meetings, not nearly as extensive as the first time around, but ensures that we are, you know, reflecting and reviewing where we have come from in the last four years and where we want to go. And I will turn it over to Dr. Boyd.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. And as Mrs. Smith just shared, there are several meetings coming up. So the special ed plan is a component of the comprehensive plan. We introduced the whole process at the education committee meeting last week. And what will happen now is we will split out and have two separate committees to focus on the work. The special ed plan also requires 28 days of review, and we will be bringing it to the board at the December board meeting for your review, so that we can then put it out for that 28-day review, and then be able to submit it to PDE by its due date, which is March 1st of 2022. So, aside from the special ed plan, something else that we're focusing on is how do we engage with our families and make sure that they have information and knowledge around special education supports and services for the students within our district? So two separate meetings will be taking place over the course of this year. Last year, if you recall, we did start in the spring, special ed roundtables that took place here in district in the evening. They were virtual. We are going to continue those this year with that in-person opportunity, as well as virtual. So they'll, you know, you can participate in either format, and they will take place four times. Opposite of that is the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Task Force, which parents and family members are encouraged and invited to join. And you can see there that there's also four meetings scheduled for this school year. They take place during the day. So what I, my goal here is to balance having morning sessions that take place with the task force, and then evening sessions for the special ed roundtables. So those have been posted. We're also communicating those via Dr. Russell's Wednesday Weekly, and if anyone has any questions, please, by all means, feel free to reach out. Thank you.
Okay, good evening. It's a pleasure to be able to present to the board, our staff, and community this evening regarding our staffing updates. As you can imagine, we had an extremely busy summer and into early fall regarding staffing. I want to first just begin by recognizing and thanking our district administrative team, our building administrators, principals, our curriculum supervisors, and special education supervisors. In addition, our teachers, community members, parents, and board members that had the opportunity to participate, and student representatives that had the opportunity to participate in our interview processes this summer and early fall. It absolutely takes many individuals, and we appreciate the valuable feedback they provided in the process. You can see how busy our summer and early fall have been. We've interviewed and hired over 24 professionals, staff members, and one district administrator. We really focused our efforts, thanks to the board and the community, on wellness this, coming into this school year, and we were able to hire four additional counselors, a BCBA, and additional special education staff to ensure that we're supporting our students and their needs, especially as we returned from our return to in-school instruction. Our Director of Operations, Joe Fabrizio, new to the district, just recently started. So again, very busy summer into early fall. We still have some positions, if you go to the next slide, that we are currently interviewing for. We have a special education teacher at the high school. We do have a paraprofessional currently serving in that position as an EDS. Viking Academy, we're currently in the process of our final interview for a kindergarten teacher. It is a .5 position. It's the last of seven positions for our Viking Academy. We have one English language development teacher at the elementary level that we're currently looking to secure, and then also an instructional support teacher at Middle School West, currently serves as, it's an LTS position that we are looking to fill currently. In addition, we also have some administrative positions that I know many of our board members have had the opportunity to participate in the interview process, and we hope to secure these individuals, if not by October 11th into November. That is our goal for these three positions. Support staff, we also had a busy hiring season. We hired 15 instructional paraprofessionals that support both regular ed and special education, one instructional personal care paraprofessional, 17 part-time cafeteria monitors, and also five custodians. We still are short of our staff to be fully staffed for this school year. Our efforts, if you go to the next slide, we're currently working on additional instructional paraprofessional positions. You can see we have 19 and a half current positions open. We've shared that information, obviously, with the school board, and we're continuing our efforts as administrative team to secure these positions. Two custodians, and then also two cafeteria monitors pending board approval. Action on those items, we're adding one position at each of our middle schools to support the increased environments and learning areas that we need for, for lunch. At this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Russell for Health and Safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. And this evening, the board has been asked to review some updates to our Health and Safety Plan, and there are just a few aspects that I would like to call out. The first would be around the language regarding masking and the exemption process, excuse me. Second would be the assurance testing program and the details of what's being expected there and what's now required. And third, there is a recommendation for how we might navigate winter sports and mask wearing. And there are some questions about that that emerged from our Wellness Committee meeting a few weeks ago, and there is no clear recommendation from PIA. However, our athletic director and I have been in conversations, and along with other school districts, have posed the recommendation that students would be expected to wear masks, again, because they're indoors during practice and while they're on the bench, but during competition could be relieved of those masks. We may also want to consider levels of transmission as we think about what may be most appropriate for our winter athletes. So that may be the one proposed revision that there is conversation around or discussion. I welcome your questions, if you have them.
Mrs. Lofton.
Thank you, Mrs. Evans-Brockett. Dr. Russell, one of the questions that we had when we talked about this in Wellness Committee is, what would be the requirement for quarantine if a team member were found to have COVID and the students had been playing unmasked? Would the entire team then be required to isolate and test out of quarantine, or what do we know what the process would be in that situation?
So we don't have a test-out-of-quarantine program yet. That is being discussed at the county level, but it's premature right now to actually know which way it may end up. However, if there is a positive confirmed case, we would do contact tracing, and we would have to actually figure out whether or not individuals were in, within that three feet of distance without masks for 15 minutes or more. So it would involve a contact tracing process, and then from there, the information would then dictate whether or not individuals would be required to quarantine. The county weighs in on that as well with us at times. That's generally how that, how that would work.
Okay. Thank you. It was my understanding that if you are exposed, you can take a PCR test and come back after five days, as opposed to having to isolate for 10 days?
If you are a close contact and you take a test on day five,
Right.
Yes, if it's negative, you can return. So you have to quarantine, but it's modified.
But not, right. Okay.
You're right, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
That's an important point, because that is helpful to some of our students, yes. Yes, I appreciate you calling that out. That's correct.
Thank you.
Mrs. Mears.
Thank you. Just to follow up on that, but if you're vaccinated, you're, you don't need to quarantine?
That is correct. If you're vaccinated, you do not have to quarantine. That's another important call-out. That's in our Health and Safety Plan, but yes, that's accurate. Yes.
So can, I guess I'm trying to understand why we're looking at masking during practice, but not masking during actual playtime, competition? So I don't know if somebody, if somebody can speak to that rationale.
If the board is okay, Mrs. Evans-Brockett, if it's okay, I'll ask Mr. Felty if that's all right to speak to this, and if you would come to the mic, Mr. Felty, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. I, I think it's a very legitimate question. I guess, as athletic director, I feel the best, the best thing I can do is to try to stop the spread, obviously, and stop our kids from getting COVID. But at the same time, try to get But at the same time, try to give them the best chance of competing at a high level. And so I felt like this was a good balance and it revolves around the definition of a close contact. It's most likely to happen in practice, more so than in the game. For example, in a game, it's rare that you'd be around the same player for 15 minutes or more. In practice, it's not rare. Now, we create pods within our practices, but they're also wearing masks. And so that's why I felt that it was important that we kept that in place for during practices. For example, even a wrestling match, it sounds crazy, but they're, they're only out there for six minutes together. So it doesn't meet the criteria of, of a 15-minute identified close contact. And so to me, that prevents, prevents the possibility of a sports team being shut down a lot better than, you know, if we have it for practice, but not for a game. So I, I felt that was one of the determining factors. And then lastly, I think Phoenixville and Perkyomen Valley are the only ones this fall who are requiring masks at all times. Most everyone in the pack has already shifted towards not requiring a mask when in active competition. And so tho- those were the reasons for the recommendation.
I'm just wondering if, and I think we talked about this a little bit at Wellness, but if, if students are vaccinated, why would we be requiring them to mask at all? I mean, I, I hear what you're saying.
With, without knowing the vaccination status of all of our athletes, it's hard for me to make a determination on that. I mean, obviously, we had a couple, a couple incidents here in the fall. And the close, identified close contacts were vaccinated. So we were very fortunate, which is a great thing, obviously. But without knowing the vaccination status of our, all of, all of our athletes, it's, it's, it's hard to take that into consideration. If I knew that everyone's vaccinated, it would make it a lot easier, but obviously, we don't know that, so.
Are there any other questions from board members? Mrs. Mears.
Do we want to discuss or do we need to discuss looking at transmission rates in the district? And whether, is that something we need to discuss now? Like if we're in the low range, what are, are we going to shift our plans or is that something we'll do in the future?
No, I don't believe it's on the agenda for this evening for the approval. So that'll be something that we discuss when we, when it comes to the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Felty.
You're welcome. Thank you.
If I may offer one more piece of information to the board, at the prompting of one of our board members, Ms. Widener has organized all iterations of our health and safety plans since their first creation last summer in July. They're in the library and you'll see them, health and safety plans. And if you scroll down, it's the bottom link on the left. If you can sort of visualize that right now as I'm moving my hands here. But I appreciate the recommendation and it, it affords you access to each of the different versions of the health and safety plan and the updates that have been made. So for reference, and that'll be open to the public.
Thank you. Turn it back over to Dr. Kohler now.
Okay, moving on to item 4.02, the enrollment report. I don't know if Mrs. Smith, you had anything to share for that?
No, there's nothing of, of note here. We are working on some comparisons that we will share with the board from previous years to, to current years, but otherwise, it's pretty similar.
Okay, moving on to item 4.03, the recommended action will be a motion to approve the following international trip, Europe 2023, as reviewed and forwarded by building principals and district administration. Any comments or discussion on this item? So we can move that to consent. 4.04, the recommended action will be a motion to approve, I'm going to say this wrong, Komajo School of Japan rescheduling this year's exchange to visit the Perkyomen Valley High School from March 2022 to March 2023, previously approved in October 2020. The rescheduling is due to the coronavirus pandemic. Any comments or discussion? So we can move that to consent as well. Item 4.04, the recommended action is a motion to approve the Komajo School of Japan rescheduling this year's exchange visit to Perkyomen Valley High School from March 2020. Oh, I'm sorry. This is the reverse. To reschedule the Japan exchange program from 2022 to 2020, 2023 as listed. Any comments or discussions? We can move that to consent. Item 4.06, the motion, recommended action is a motion to approve the following field trips as reviewed and forwarded by building principals and district administration. This is a high school AP environmental science and AP biology trip. Any discussions around this? If not, we'll move to consent. 4.07, the recommended action will be a motion to approve the 2021, 2022 Health and Safety Plan Version 9 as presented. So we will leave this one off consent. And item.
I, I, this one's okay. It's, right? It's a separate sports one? Is that our athletics?
Uh, this, we do have a separate athletics, health and safety plan. There is a bit of blending in here because we did call out masking in winter sports as we talked about masking. Some districts have actually combined those plans so that the athletic considerations or considerations during extracurriculars are covered in the overall health and safety plan. However, for now, this is really health and safety overall with that piece connected to winter sports as we consider and look ahead.
So do we want to leave it off consent or put it on consent? Okay, we'll put it on consent and it can always be removed if needed. And item 4.08, the recommended action will be a motion to ratify the memorandum of agreement regarding the district's assurance testing program. Any discussion? Mr. Dorr?
Are we, is the district looking at alternative, alternative testing methods for the teachers that have either health concern or religious concerns such as the saliva test?
Yes, I appreciate the question, Mr. Dorr. We are looking, Mr. Moran and I, into options and particularly the saliva test, yes, as well as some of the other newer research. We're, you know, trying to keep up with that. So yes, we are doing that. Thank you.
Should we leave this off consent until it's ironed out?
This needs to be off consent because we still need to finalize the MOA.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs. Mears.
Um, I'm just wondering, and I'm gonna, is it true that these tests are only good through the end of December? And then they're, they aren't, we can't use them anymore as a district or, I don't know. I just heard some information. I'm just trying to, I'm going to go back and, and do some reading and research, but I've also read that I thought somewhere and I'm not sure where.
So I, I need to follow that up too. I heard the comment tonight and I have been a part of some discussions. It could be that the project ends through CHOP, who is right now facilitating the distribution of the tests. So I will follow up on that comment and we'll follow up on your question with the board this week to get some more information to confirm.
Mrs. Lofton.
Dr. Russell, are we doing anything to try to make the testing more accessible for individuals who need to travel outside of their buildings?
We, we actually are, well, from the perspective of Mr. Moran and myself, we have tried to be accommodating right now and not interfere with teaching schedules or their contractual 30-minute duty-free lunch, their prep time. And have set up hours before and after school at two different locations, district office as well as the northern end of the district at Middle School West. We are, however, exploring the possibility of trying to set up testing in each of our schools. And that's a staffing question. We're trying to work through that, but we are looking at that in an effort to be as convenient as possible for those that are participating. So haven't decided for sure yet, but we are investigating that, yes.
Any other discussion around item 4.08? So we will leave that one off consent and that concludes section four.
Thank you, Dr. Kohler. Moving on to section five on business, Mr. Weaver? I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Dorr?
Right, it's the same thing. Thanks, Mrs. Evans-Brockett. 5.01 is finance update. Mr. Weaver.
Thank you for this opportunity to present some financial information. And yes, I'm just a shorter version of Matt, so. Real quick, we've got some, some quick hitters here, so we'll, we'll keep, keep it moving along. There's the agenda for tonight. The Act One sort of, has been certified. So the Act One index for Perkyomen Valley School District is based upon a 3.4%. That is the base. There is no additional bump for that, much like we've talked about in the past. It's just confirmed now. And that helps us to set up the discussion and analysis from the Finance Committee that essentially the Finance Committee has recommended that we approve the resolution that we move forward with keeping the Act One index at or below 3.4%. There is a lot of information here, but what I wanted to do was mainly focus in on the 12 years' worth of data, which quickly shows the actual tax increase that we had versus the actual base Act One index and what Perkyomen Valley School District's Act One index. And the 3.4% is the highest number in the past 12 years. So the conversation at the Finance Committee kind of set that up and we feel confident with that number, knowing what it is, knowing we have some challenges moving forward, but we do feel comfortable recommending that. That is the recommendation for tonight and you'll see a board motion to do that. And just a quick reminder, obviously, we all know as experienced veteran school board members and administrators that this is just the start of the 2022, 2023 budget process. So it's, it's a threshold for us and we work towards it and then go down. Just a quick summary of the COVID grants and just to keep it alive and on everybody's plate that we have these monies that we continue to work through from an administrative perspective and also a school board perspective. Mrs. Hurd is doing a wonderful job tracking a lot of those expenditures and Mrs. Smith is continuing and Mr. Ganesh are continuing to do a good job of spending those monies. So it's, it's a good, it's a good act for us to follow through on. But there is good intention on both sides, so it's good. It'll keep us out of trouble. The budget timelines, we did have two of these, but because the recommendation is to move forward with the Act One resolution, we now have one. This is our goal and this is what sets us up for the many actions moving forward over the next couple of months, just to get that out there. We did go through the process of creating a no, a normal Act One budget process as well. And there is much more flexibility to meet our demands and our requirements under the resolution once we adopt it. For tonight, there is consideration, again, that has come out of the actual Safety and Operations Committee in regards to recommending an approval the cost for two additional cafeteria monitors, one at East and one at West to help assist. And the main purpose of that is because we have two different lunch areas for East and West. So that would help in the operations and keeping, keeping everything in order. That would cost us about $20,266. Remember cafeteria monitors come out of the general fund, not out of the food service fund, just a note. Just wanted to get that on the record. The other item that we did talk about in the Finance Committee under Mr. Ganesh was the additional cost for the live stream sports, which is, has been very successful and they'd like to branch out on. And there is a potential for those monies to come back if we monetize that. I know we're working on that, but there could be a offsetting revenue stream to help offset that cost. And so those, those items are, are going to be on, on the agenda moving forward. RFP for custodial help. We opened these RFPs late in the day on, on Friday. Yes, there are zeros. The board is aware that the first time we went through this, we did have some specific numbers for SOS and for Precision HR. We did go back out with a formal RFP. We have those rates, but Mr. Moran and I are looking at the contractual language in the back. And what we are finding is that's where the rubber hits the road for us because remember, we have purpose for the use of these temporary custodial help, which is to help us garner additional people, to get them into the system, to see how they work, to do those due diligences that are brought in and have a broader depth and process to gain additional people to bring in, to recognize them, to look at their habits. And then eventually in the backend of these contracts, it will tell us when and how we can hire these people moving forward to become permanent, permanent custodians if we desire within the union. So that's why we're kind of moving together, just a quick way for us to get out and have a bigger area for us to get the much-needed custodial help that we do need, especially during this pandemic. One other item to note, just wanted to get it on the record, the Finance Committee did talk with Jamie Doyle from PFM Financially for our debt service and we are tracking something. We have nothing to present at this time, but our normal process is to meet with Jamie in the fall and she's set us up with some options to talk about and to move forward with.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Are there any questions for Mr. Weaver?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Moving on to 5.02, there's no report for grants and donations. 5.03 is on consent. 5.04, motion to approve a resolution pursuant to section 311, subsection D1, special session Act One of the 2006 as presented by the solicitor. Any questions? Okay, let's move that to consent, please. 5.05 is a placeholder and that ends my section.
Thank you, Mr. Dorr. Got it right this time. Section six, payment of bills. Dr. Weston, please.
Thank you, Mrs. Evans-Brockett. Item 6.01, the ratification of bills and payroll and the authorization of payments. And item 6.02, the approval of the treasurer's report and financial statements. Both of these items will be, will be presented for action at next week's business meeting and that concludes section six.
Thank you, Dr. Weston. Section seven, professional personnel. Ms. White, please.
Thank you, Mrs. Evans-Brockett. 7.01, 2, 3, and I'm sorry, 1 and 2 are on consent. 1, 7.03 is a placeholder. 7.04, 5, 6 and 7 are all on consent. It brings us to 7.08. That's a motion to approve the performance objectives as part of the yearly evaluation for the superintendent. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we can move that to consent. 7.09 is the motion to approve the performance objectives as part of the yearly evaluation for the assistant superintendent. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we can move that to consent and that ends my section.
Thank you, Ms. White. Section eight, support personnel. Mrs. Roberts, please.
Thank you, Mrs. Evans-Brockett. 8.01, 8.02 are both on consent. 8.03 is a motion to approve, um, the performance objective as part of a, oh, sorry. Okay, there it goes. Uh, to prove the creation of two cafeteria monitor positions, one for Middle School East and one for Middle School West. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, we can move that to consent. 8.04, 8.05 are on consent. 8.06 is to approve two student intern positions for the Communications and Technology Department to live stream district activities and events. Students will be compensated at the rate of $10 per hour, total cost for 2021, 22, not to exceeds $10,000. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, we can move that to.
Well, Dr. Russell has a comment.
I just wanted to follow up. Mr. Weaver had some information about the live streaming in his report. And in speaking with Mr. Ganesh, it's not only athletics that we would like to extend this service to, which is why that cost is a little bit higher in the motion than what you saw on the slides. I wanted to call that out for the record. We are interested in supporting music ensembles and competitions involving our ensembles, whether it's marching band, percussion, color guard, some of those things that happen over the course of the year as well as home and schools. They have a lot of events that last year we realized they would have benefited from. They have a lot of events that last year, we realized they would have benefited from some support around to livestream. So we'd like to support them as well, which is why you see that number.
Theater as well?
Theater as well, absolutely, yes. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? We can move that to consent. And 8.07 is a placeholder. Approval of Memorandum of Understanding for Custodians. And that concludes Section 8.
Thank you, Mrs. Roberts. Section 9, Governance, Mrs. Mears, please.
Thank you. The following policies are presented for a first reading. 006 Meetings, 006.2 Meeting Agendas, 146.1 Trauma-Informed, 218.1 Weapons, 218.2 Terroristic Threats, 236.1 Threat Assessment, which is a new policy, 247 Hazing, 249 Bullying and Cyberbullying, 252 Dating Violence, 805 Emergency Preparedness, 805.2 School Security Personnel, 903 Public Participation in Board Meetings, and 916 School Volunteers. Are there any questions? Okay. So we can move those to a second reading. 9.02, it's a motion to choose and endorse candidates for PSBA officers for the year 2022.
So we had this on our agenda last month and gave another month to do some research if any Board member has anything they'd like to offer.
So Dr. Kohler and I disagreed on our choice for President. I went back and rewatched any of the meetings I could find, and I actually tend to agree with her that Sabrina Becker would be a better choice for President.
Thank you. Anyone else? So there's also, so it sounds like we're going to have a motion for Sabrina Becker for next week. But then also, for the Forum Steering Committee, we have to choose three of the four. So come prepared next week to make a motion for that.
That's a good question. So I read their four BIOS, and there was very little information. Is there, does anyone else have any other information? Because I couldn't pick out of those four, they all sounded very similar.
Agreed. I, I'll check in with my PSBA contacts and see if I can find out anything. But in my research, boards have kind of been all over the place in who they're voting for. It kind of doesn't seem like there's a bad candidate. They all have experience with PSBA.
Okay, thank you, and that ends my section.
Thank you, Mrs. Mears. That brings us on to Section 10, Closing Items. 10.01, we'll accept comments from the audience with the same rules as we had in the beginning. Is there any audience member who'd like to make a public comment? Seeing none, that takes us on to 10.02, Comments from Board Members. Just to note that any Board member comment is not representative of the Board as a whole. Are there any Board members who'd like to make a comment? Seeing none. I will note that we had executive session for the purpose of labor negotiations prior to tonight's meeting. And also that we are changing next week's meeting date from Monday, the 11th, to Tuesday, the 12th because of the holidays. Item 10.03, the Notice of Video Recording Disclaimer. Per Policy 006.3, all video recordings are subject to the following disclaimer. The opinions expressed by any members of the public do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of School Directors of the Perkioman Valley School District and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of School Directors of Perkioman Valley School District hereby expressly disclaims any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public. Any unauthorized rebroadcasting of any video, audio, and/or still image of this meeting is strictly forbidden without the written permission of the Board of School Directors of the Perkioman Valley School District. And with that, we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.